All right, we are live on YouTube. Good to go.
Okay, thanks Dan. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us for this virtual experience. Today is Tuesday, May 12, 2020. It is past the 10 o'clock hour. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for what said boards or acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Kylie, would you please take role?
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Supervisor Callen?
Here.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Here.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Here.
Chair Hemmingson?
Here. I hope you all please take a moment of reflection. And now if you all please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance. Ready to get.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic of the public as one nation.
Under God. With liberty and justice for all.
We have any introductions of new employees?
No.
Okay, county council, any reportable act in closed session?
No reportable action.
You, at this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from workers to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the board of supervisors. Are there any such items? Okay, seeing no changes, we will move on to brief reports relative to county programs, projects, progress by two by two goal committees. Trouble, training, anything, we're going to start with supervisor Berkowitz.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last two weeks, I've received numerous questions with the same theme. When are we going to open up Delmar County? In a recent conversation with Dr. Raywall, he believes that the governor needs to give us some flexibility that reflects our geography and population density. I would hope that we'll hear that, some of that today, some of that flexibility by Dr. Raywall today. Along with the other supervisors, I attended the special board meeting held last week. Talked with several constituents about the transfer of the recreation area in Humboldt Hunter Creek. And from the county to the residents of the area. LaFco is going to be looking into the procedure for accomplishing this. And lastly, I'd like to note the passing of my good friend Aaron Funk, the owner of Camp Clamath, the RV Park in Clamath. It was a real blow to all of us. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Been a busy couple of weeks. Supervisor Berkowitz alluded to COVID-19 is on the top of mind of just about every one of our constituents. As we'll be having a great more deal of discussion on this issue today, more specifically with what our opening strategy is for Delmar County, I won't go into the much detail. I will say, however, the weeks have been busy with other county items of concern. And moving forward rapidly with those has been my intent to stay as much on course with business as usual. We've had a lot of concerns with the Gasky Airport and the public using the Gasky Airport as a public walkway with pilots coming in and out of there, which has raised some concerns, but have had excellent response from the sheriff's office. And also from Randy Hooper with the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority to try to come up with a meeting and strategy on how to better deal with some of these longstanding issues. Also had a great deal of discussion on the local transportation commission meeting concerning moving forward with budget items, but also on Highway 199 and Highway 101. Projects of concern specifically turn lanes into the Dollar General store in Smith River, but also the speed issues that we're seeing an increase of on Highway 199, which is obviously an enforcement issue, but at the same times, some of those speed issues escalate into property damage and the taking of human life and trying to figure out how best to wrestle with that is always of importance. Continued to have discussions, long discussions with Senator McGuire's office, including Senator McGuire and also Chris Nielsen and Rebecca Washberg on issues related to COVID, opening up of parks and some of the background decisions that went into very frustrating moments for the Delmar County Board of Supervisors and then of Dr. Raywall, when some announcements were made a couple of weeks ago that we all fielded questions on. How to best move forward with these strategies will be very interesting here in the future. First five family commissions meeting I also attended, and then some discussions with constituents around issues with intersections up near the Talladega Nation. That's the short synopsis of my meetings for the last couple of weeks, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Berkowitz, if I already gave you supervisor Gitlin, I'm sorry.
First, I'd like to also report the passing of my good friend Aaron Funk. Aaron passed away yesterday. He was recently diagnosed with stage four pancreatic cancer, which is spread throughout his body, affecting his liver, and he was will be dearly missed. He was the owner of our Camp Clamath RV Park, which as many of you know, attended weekly events during the summer months, musical and dining events, chicken and salmon were legend. And it's very sad day to report his passing. He was 78. Our North Coast Emergency Services Group met April 30 via a Zoom meeting and approved the annual regional plan, which included the approval of Lake, this involves Lake Humboldt and Delmar Counties regional plan, and St. Joseph remains as a level three hospital, Mad River Community Hospital, level four Sutter Lakeside and Sutter Coast here in Crescent City remain as level four hospitals. Local Transportation met last Tuesday and conducted some routine business. There were some amendments regarding coordination with Caltrans on 199 Elk Valley Crossroads. There was some discussion about the latest injury accident of 199 mile post 1.45 heading eastbound. CHB identified the accident as a single car event, which involved excessive speed in this 25 mile per hour zone. As Supervisor Berkowitz mentioned, our board met in special session on May 5th. Worked on sending letters of support to the Natural Resources Agency to open state parks to vehicular traffic. The vote was unanimous. The second vote involved sending letters to House Speaker Nancy Pelosi and Senate Majority Leader, Minority Leader, excuse me, Schumer requesting counties under 500,000, which includes Delmar being included to receive direct federal stimulus. The vote was four to one, and I dissented on that vote because I thought request for the bailout was premature and the source of the funding comes from borrowed capital contributing to already its incredible $25 trillion national debt. I made my argument that there are appropriate interventions that our county can undergo to open up our county, and I hope we move in that direction. Also, the participated in two economic rallies along Highway 101. These past several weeks, I've supported the local restaurant in Clamath, taking my wife and family along with another couple to support this struggling business. Apparently, my actions to support this business have upset the Rock Tribe. What you should all know is this business sits on private property and has an accessory number and is answerable to the County of Delmar and the state of California. The Log Cabin Diner has agreed to follow the public health directive from Public Health Officer Dr. Raywall, delivered by Delmar County Sheriff Haperson. These facts were not reported in any of our local media, and the public should be aware who has legal jurisdiction in this matter. To date, 466 individuals have been tested for coronavirus in Delmar County, 11 await results. 452 individuals have tested negative, but the COVID-19 virus has just affected just three cases, all recovered, all non-hospitalized, and several weeks old. Zero deaths. Pelican Bay State Prison remains COVID-free with no access, no cases or either inmates or staff, and again, zero deaths at Pelican Bay State Prison with regard to the COVID virus. The following counties have begun the process of opening up their counties and economies. Sutter, Yuba, Tahima, Trinity, Modoc, Butte, Shasta, Kern, Orange Riverside, and San Bernardino Counties have opened up in some shape form, moving into phase two. Marin County, which has zero patients in any of its hospitals, is now opening up its elective surgeries. Placer County has requested that they remove all restrictions, the governor remove all restrictions and allow its county to decide what is best for its citizens. A supervisor in that county reported that they've experienced two deaths for 100,000 people, a loss of 7,000 jobs for 100,000 people in Placer County. Delmar County reports against zero deaths and loss of hundreds, if not thousands of jobs. We don't have a count on that yet, but I'm hoping I'm working on that. And is challenged to meet the requirements to satisfy the state due to its limited ability to mass test and direction and how often workers would be subject to testing is still unknown. All the above counties I just mentioned have been threatened with the loss of revenue by the governor's office. California currently ranks fifth in the county, the fifth in the state, excuse me, in the country in COVID cases and eighth overall in COVID-related deaths with approximately, and again, this is not a number to be trivialized, 2,750 succumbing to the virus. The numbers are deceiving and misleading. We have a population of 40 million. The death rate in California is infinitesimally small, and I'll give it to you as a fraction. Point 0000.38, correction, point 00038, which comes out to less than two fifths of one hundredth of one percent on a scale of 100%. And stated another way, California has experienced 68 deaths for every 1 million residents. If the number is hard to understand, it's certainly understandable. I can appreciate that. But simply stated, the death rate for the virus in California is almost invisible, and more importantly, Delmar County does not have a COVID-19 issue. And I wonder if any of you remember Woodstock back in 1969, the musical event occurred during the 1968 to 70 Hong Kong flu, where 100,000 Americans died and over 1 million died around the world. No one even remembers that event, obviously. They remember Woodstock, but not the fact that these numbers were so profound. The figures come from the Center for Disease Control. Delmar County must open its economy, and it must do so now, or it will perish. Our neighbor county, Curry County in Oregon, has begun the process of opening its economy. Stores are open in Brookings, Harbors, and motels and short-term rentals. If they've not already opened, will open shortly, creating important revenue streams for Curry. In communicating with Commissioner Kurt, Court Voice up in Oregon, he reiterated to me the importance of opening up its county at this time immediately. And a prominent member of our Delmar County Chamber sent our board a very curt message. You're just to work together and figure out how to open up our county. He is correct. He will remain unidentified, of course. If we on the board cannot figure out what and how and when to open our county, then I would ask this board to immediately develop an ad hoc committee of medical, health, business, and non-government community members who would report to the board weekly on what parts of our community should be opened and when they should be open. This is no time for delay. Leadership and action is required immediately before so many of our businesses will simply wither away and will no longer exist in the future. That's my report.
Vice Chair Callen.
Thank you, Chairman. As many have already mentioned, COVID-19 definitely takes up a lot of time with emails and phone calls. I've had a meeting with the group for No Place Like Home to discuss next steps, and we will be doing interviews on developers actually today. Attended Senator McGuire's Town Hall that he put on last week by telephone. We had the city-county two by two, which were in discussions of public safety initiative. Listen to the joint meeting that you were a part of, Chairman, along with the mayor, Machana, and Dr. Raywall participated in the special meeting of the BOS. Attended a meeting with the Republican Women's to give them an update on what the county is doing moving forward. And I want to include that we do have a group formed, the Economic Resilience Tax Force, that was put together early on, and they are working with all of the different businesses throughout our community. They have been doing, started last week, well, they started working specifically kind of going into different areas, whether you're a restaurant or community churches, but they have separated it out into the different groups and have taken the community input and talked about how, when we do start to open up, hopefully very soon, and we'll talk about that today, that all the businesses and the other community entities know what is expected and how we're going to move forward, and we made sure that they were a part of that conversation. And I just want everybody to understand that that's what we've been doing for the last few weeks. This isn't something that we've ignored. And everybody's been working together, and that task force has been formed. And they've been doing their job, and they've been doing a really good job at it. So thank you all who were involved with that. We had a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. And as you call it, imagine, employments are down, but hopefully that'll start to turn around as well. And then I had a very lengthy conference call with Senator McGuire, talking about everything from COVID to community testing, possibly doing what they did in Mendocino, which is more of a bridge, a little bit different than what they're doing in Humboldt. Concerns around Pelican Bay, EDD, unemployment, that's what I'm hearing a lot about. People are, you know, wanting to see their money. And numbers are really interesting. 2019, we had 2.2 million unemployment claims, and just in the first eight weeks, California took over 4 million. So they've put about 1,300 workers over there. So anybody waiting for their unemployment, they're working on it. The other thing I've been just working a lot with is just the homeless stuff. So again, like No Place Like Home. Making sure that, Daphne, again, thank you to Mission Possible and all the working, what they're doing with the showers. Making sure people are fed and have clothing. That's really important. So my meeting, I felt, was really informative and very good with Senator McGuire. I always appreciate his time. We're moving forward, and I hopefully this week will show that to the community, and we'll start to take our next steps that everybody's been working on so diligently the last few weeks. So that's it for me. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, I attended some trainings put on by the county for G-Suite account settings, Gmail Basic, and Google Calendar training put on by Rachel Serena from IT. She did a great job. And hopefully that helps some people that were having some issues or maybe could pick up some pointers from that. As Vice Chair Callen said, we've had some No Place Like Home meetings. We had a staff meeting to set up the interviews for potential development sponsors. So that's going to happen very shortly. I had a Smith River Collaborative Meeting. Assembly member Jim Wood had a conference call with several counties and CAOs about the COVID-19 issues. CAO Serena was as well on that call. I did attend Senator McGuire's Town Hall. He always does a great job with that. We had an RCRC Special Executive Meeting. As was mentioned, I participated in the public forum, public forum with Dr. Raywall, the mayor in score, Machana, Kenny Scott, and others. And Mayor Enscore did a great job fielding questions and going through that whole thing. So that was good. As was mentioned, I did attend the special board meeting and closed session for the county, had a gender review, as was mentioned, had a local transportation commission meeting, as well as a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority meeting. I did get a call from Senator McGuire talking about COVID issues and economy and things like that, as well as a follow-up call with Chris Nielsen, his Chief of Staff, or excuse me, his legislative assistant. Chris Nielsen and also had, along with Supervisor Howard, we had a Natural Resources Goal Committee meeting. And I attended a Whale Entanglement Group conference call for a risk assessment for the upcoming two-week time period, was still considered to be a low risk. And that is about it for me. I did field a lot of calls on COVID, had a lot of interested people in wanting to open up specific things, and hopefully get a chance to talk to Dr. Raywall about that when he does his presentation. So that's about it for me. At this time, we're going to move on to our public comment period. Kylie, do you have any written public comments?
I do have one.
Okay.
And it is from Edward Salsito and Sherri Scott. And it says, has the County of Delmar reached out to other counties that are wanting to open up and petition with them, the governor, to take common sense action and loosening restrictions on mildly affected areas? Further be advised that we are in the process of acquiring legal counsel to sue Delmar County and the county health officer for the restraint of trade for taking health measures not supported by science, business loss, court costs, attorney fees, mental anguish, and any punitive damages so awarded by the courts. And that's all I had for written public.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? If you have public comment, just push the raise hand button, and we'll let you speak. Are there any raised hands?
Yes, there are. One minute. First one is Linda Sutter.
Linda, go ahead.
Actually, the system's telling me that Linda has an older version of Zoom, and it will not allow her to use this feature. Linda, you're either going to have to call in or use the update feature in your Zoom program and able to, in order to talk on this. I'm going to switch. There's one person labeled as Wonderstump.
Okay.
They should be good to go.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? This is Robert Durigo.
Hi, Robert. Go ahead.
Hi, guys. You know, I just, you know, want to encourage you guys to, you know, be cautious and really make a prediction of as far as, you know, what would be our toll right now if we shared it per capita with the rest of the world, the rest of the country, you know? And, you know, deciding how we open up. I'm just afraid of tourism because we're going to have people who don't believe in this, don't believe in wearing masks coming here if we're a little bit too open, you know? I've been writing the board since, I think, March 4th or March 6th, you know, very concerned with this, and I'd been concerned that in February it hadn't been talked about, considering that we were a tourist economy that had a lot of elders. And so I put together, you know, just what we would share if we had cases here. If we shared the US average number, you know, it would mean that we would have already lost five Delmore's. If we shared Sweden's number right now, you know, as much as we think they're going fine, we would have lost seven Delmore's of our 25,000 Delmore's so far. And if we shared New York's numbers, you know, we would have lost 29 so far. And so this is not adjusting any opening policy, but all these countries and all these states still have massive active cases, you know, so New York, 75% of the cases are still active. Does that mean that we're going to triple that number? Does that mean in a month, Delmore's share, if we were affected like New York, would be like 60 people, you know? So I just want you to try to speculate what you think the fatality rate is. I've come to think it's pretty low, like a third of a percent to a half a percent. But that still means we're going to lose Delmore's once it gets here, and I'd like you guys to figure out how many you think that would be. You know, and then we can look at other places that have done well and just don't have the problem, and they're taking it very seriously. Vietnam has 288 total cases. They haven't lost anybody. Our CDC believes their numbers. They have offices there. They have no new cases today, and Iceland's in a very similar situation as well. No new cases, you know, if we were to share their toll, nobody would die, you know? You know, I know we can't stay shut down forever, but we really do need a unified action to try to save a few Delmore's in the end, you know? You know, instead, we're thinking, hoping employments come up, that they go up right now, and now's not the time when you want employments to go up. This economic hurt is like chemotherapy for a cancer patient, and it's going to hurt, you know? But overall, it's still the recommended course, you know? And interest, you know, I mean, I'd like to see like, you know, how many bedmakers are really interested in going and making beds right now? I know the business people are writing you guys right now, and I'm a business person who's suffering from this. But, you know, you could, I know from going to these meetings that that's mostly what you guys see as a business interest showing up, you know? It's very rare that regular people show up to those meetings. There's people retiring, celebrating something, or business people that are showing up. So I'd hope you consider that. There's a big quiet interest that stays home and doesn't show up to rallies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Kylie was, or Dan, was Linda Sutter able to get back on or call in by phone?
She is trying right now. We'll move over to Thomas Barnes right now.
Okay.
Thomas is the same issue it's telling me. The system is telling me that they're using an older version of Zoom and will not connect to ours. Thomas, you'd have to do the same thing, either call in or take a moment to update your Zoom product.
Is there anybody else down?
There is nobody else right now.
Okay, well, we'll take a minute or so and see if we can get those people to connect.
The dial-in phone number is 253-215-8782. And when you're dialed in, if you're connected on the phone, you need to press star six on your phone to unmute. And actually, star nine on your phone will raise your hand.
So maybe we could, we'll, we'll hold public comment. We'll just put it on hold for a minute, and we'll move to our 10:30 timed item and come back to public comment. We'll come back to review and discuss Delmar County's Treasurers Report for the quarter ending March 31st. Barbara?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's see. Can you see my screen?
I cannot.
Okay. Share screen. I'm asking, let's see, Dan, do you have anything that I'm missing here? Trying to share my screen. Trying to share my screen.
No, I mean it's. I did change the setting. You can try again.
Okay. Oh, shoot. How about now?
Hey, look at that.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Okay, so for those at home, my name's Barbara Lopez, the Delmar County Treasurer. And I'm here to report our quarter ending March 31st, 2020's. Treasures report. Let's see, so the portfolio ended at about 49,171,895 for the quarter. Leif closed out at 17.7 million dollars. We have CDs totaling 11.2 million dollars. Our agency government bonds are about 34% of the portfolio at 16.9 million. Our mitigation funds, a little over 5% of the portfolio at 2.6. And our Cal Trust General Fund. Investment is staying at 500,000. Okay, so some new things kind of happening for this quarter and next quarter. The schools do plan on spending some of their Geo Bond money this summer, about $3 million. They've also notified me that there's going to be some deferrals. So to keep as liquid as possible in case that does happen, they're looking at doing a tran possibly or something new that we haven't experienced, what's called dry period funding. So we'll look into that if that's absolutely needed. As I'm sure everybody knows, rates have taken a huge drop, but thankfully Leif is still at a really good rate. So being liquid right now is actually really good for us. And like I said, I'm keeping extremely liquid, not knowing how things are going to. Come down in the summer for just unknown cash flow needs. Our earnings were great. This last quarter, we had $281,000, which is great. And you can see where Leif was a pretty big number and that's because it is really earning a good amount. And we've been keeping pretty liquid in Leif. So 124,000 just in Leif interest is really good to see. And this, I thought I would include what the rates were as of April 29th. Because March 31st to April 29th changed drastically. You could see that Leif is 1.787, which is great. But then you can see where CDs in the agency bullets and collables are really, really low. And I'm pretty sure they're a little bit lower now. But not needing to invest in anything right now is actually a good thing. So we'll just enjoy Leif's higher rate until we need to invest in something else. If, on a side note, if we ever do need to sell anything, our market value on the portfolio is huge. I think when I did my market value for the end of the quarter. We had about $800,000 in market value extra. So if I did have to sell anything, we would be in a good position and I wouldn't be uncomfortable doing that. And so that is an option if we ever need to do that. A little bit of investment activity, some great rates actually for February, I bought a. A couple bonds, 1.6% for a three year bullets, great rate, 1.8 for a five year, one year. A couple CDs. But other than that, I put in April's purchases, just I haven't done anything since April and I don't anticipate buying anything through the summer. Just to let you guys know. We did have some maturities which did help out with cash flow. You'll kind of see where we were at last quarter. And then a couple called securities and a CD, which I'm not surprised about. So cash flow wasn't too great for the end of March, but that's sort of typical. January is pretty low. We do have quite a bit of expenses. Some bigger, bigger expenses that were paid out in January and in February. And then I did an actual cash flow in April, since I did this at the end of the month. So 3.4 million was our actual cash flow for April. May and June, I'm doing an average, but. Honest with you, I kind of feel like we're going to be quite a bit more in the negative. So just to kind of prepare yourself for that. But I'm prepared and we'll do whatever we need to do to keep things running smoothly. And that's all I have for today.
Great, Barbara. Thank you so much. Any questions from board members?
Yeah, Barbara, can you hear me okay?
I can. Hi, Roger.
Barbara, can you update the board on late collections or lack of property taxes that were due?
Sure, sure.
Last time you contacted, what's changed?
It actually, nothing has really changed. I think we're doing really good. Our, I just looked at our tax stats report. We're a little over 92% for our collection rating for the second installment, which is right where we need to be. We usually end the. Year with about a 95% collection rating overall. We do have a couple accounts that are, some of our larger accounts that haven't paid yet, that I anticipate will request penalty waivers. And I'm happy to help with that. We have only received about 20 penalty waiver forms and I'm happy to report that I was able to do that for those individuals. But I'm really happy that the taxpayers. Were able to pay their taxes and grateful for the positive feedback that I got. It was a very pleasant April 10th. And as far as our, I thought I, excuse me, our TOT, our transient occupancy tax. We are a little bit low. I think we had about 60,000 for last. Quarter last year and we're at about 40. 48 to 50,000 right now. So that's good. We're not super behind the revenue on that. But just so you know, TOT for this quarter is going to be probably virtually none. So we'll just prepare ourselves budget wise for that.
Does that transient occupancy tax reflect in the projected deficits in May of $3 million?
I would assume so. I did update my budget and I gave. The CAO just a little information on where I think we might close out at for the year. Again, it's all a guesstimate and I was trying to not be too pessimistic, but I wanted to be. As, you know, as. I wanted to anticipate the worst, but hope for the best. So I think it is in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Has anybody got any other questions? Any questions from the public?
Linda Sutter has her hand raised. I'm not sure if that was from public comment.
Yeah, we'll get back to her on public comment, but any, any comment on the treasures report? Are you going to unshare your screen?
Oh, pardon. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no public comment, then we're going to go back to the public comment period. Linda Sutter has her hand raised and can speak. We will hear what she has to say. Linda?
I will try, I'm going to try Thomas Barnes right now.
Okay.
All right, he should be online right now. We'll work first Linda's in just a minute.
This is Thomas Barnes. Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, I just want to recap. I thought Supervisor Gitlin did a great job of recapping the current status of where we stand relative in this county, relative to other counties. I heard the public comment from somebody that is threatening to sue the county because of. The impact it's had on their businesses. And I heard the other public comment. On somebody that was really concerned about the number of cases that we might get. Regarding the COVID-19. Another thing that you need to consider is what are the unintended consequences of locking down this community? People aren't going to the hospital. You have. You have a high degree of, you've got increased violence, increased crime. People are not going and they're not getting the medical services that they require. There's an unintended consequence that is equal or greater than the threat of COVID-19. I attend via video Governor Newsom's press conferences and public luncheons where he addresses his plans for California. And I see severe pushback from communities and counties, as you all have heard, for reopening. I see their county officials lobbying Newsom's office for consideration to open some rule and some are not. I have never seen anything or I've never heard any questions or seen any representation from Del Nord County regarding. This matter. What I do see, what I have seen in this community, and I just want to call this to your attention. This is an example of what some of the people in our local government are doing for us or to us. This information was obtained via a public records request and is available to anyone in the community that is interested. On March 29th Supervisor Lori Cowan, a supervisor that has operated businesses in this community in the past. Contacted, sent an open letter and email to officials in the county and the city and departments within the county and the city. Stating that she had received emails and calls regarding the operation of two of our local businesses that were not in her district. Instead of escalating the questions and or complaints to the supervisor whose district that these businesses reside in. Or directly contacting the businesses herself to see if there was any justification to the so-called inquiries and complaints that she had received. She escalates the issues to other departments, which brings scrutiny on these businesses, resulting in consequences to the local businesses. During this period of business problems that we're having in this community. I ask you, is that the way we expect our government officials, our local government officials to treat our business community? Is your job that of a whistleblower against local businesses? I thought your job was to encourage businesses in the community, encourage new growth in the business community and protect your business community. But it seems to me that this is just not the case. While other cities and counties are fighting for their communities against an overreaching state government that wants to treat us like San Francisco, Los Angeles, or Sacramento. We just take our orders from Newsom. We shut down our businesses. We cancel our holidays and festivities and we go after those few businesses that are open on a very limited basis and cause them additional problems. I just think this is poor leadership. I believe this community needs new leadership, leadership that will fight for its community and businesses. And foster a good, healthy business climate so that we can grow and prosper as a community.
Thank you, Tony. Your three minutes is up. Appreciate your comments. Is there any other public comment?
Yeah.
Linda Sutter, I think gave up. Is that what I saw from the chat?
I believe so. We do have a way to connect her. She wants to click the raise hand button now. There is another comment on there from listed as log cabin.
I'm sorry, Dan, I missed that. There's another comment?
They're listed on the thing as log cabin and they're able to speak now.
Okay, go ahead. Was it, didn't we already receive a public comment? From them, Kylie? From Ed Salsito and. But then go ahead.
Can you hear us? Supervisor Henderson?
Yeah, go ahead.
I, yeah, I imagine you received my email. And I didn't get an answer to the question, has the board of supervisors reached out to Newsom or the other counties? To try to open Del Nord County? I don't believe that the health officer has taken real science in shutting down all businesses, especially restaurants. Food is an essential product. And I believe that, you know, that there should be some leeway, especially because since we've only had three. Cases in Del Nord County. And. The closure and the destruction is due to the economy is, is going to be irreparable. I will never, what I built up in 10 years, it's been torn down in two months. To add to the comment, you received my comment, I will be, I am seeking legal counsel. I will be suing the. Del Nord County Board of Supervisors and the County Health Officer. For the, for the. Loss of revenue, the anguish and. All punitive damages, anything I can get, we're going to come, we're going to come after the board of supervisors, Del Nord County. We don't get help and leadership from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Is there any other public comment?
So Linda Sutter does have her hand raised again, if you want to give me one moment.
Okay, Linda, go ahead.
It'll be just one moment here.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why this is such a tough thing to do. Get me on. It seems like everybody else can do it and keep telling me I have an old version of Zoom. How many times do I have to reinstall Zoom to get to participate in a public meeting? Leaders, you need to open up the community. There are no statistics in this county that demonstrate the need to continue lockdown. The city and county are not generating any revenue from taxes. There are several counties in the state of California that is taking a stand against Governor Newsom. Reading, Reading is opening their aquatic center on May 28th. Everybody's going to be in the water in the sunshine. Dr. Erickson from Kern County has brought statistics demonstrating 0.03% will actually die from the virus. Newsom's own office demonstrated a COVID-19 curve that is virtually flat. And our own county only had three cases, all cured, no deaths. Enough is enough. Dr. Ray Walt has led this community down the wrong path since the inception of COVID-19. And are, and we are supposed to look to him as a leader. You guys need to just take a stand. You're not doing anybody in this county or city any favors by cow down. Attitude. You need to join the other community, the other counties that have taken a stand against Newsom. The statistics doesn't support the shutdown and we need to go on with our lives. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I do not see any other.
Okay, so we're going to close the public comment period and we're going to move on to a presentation. From Jeff Marzal from the US Forest Service. Jeff, are you on?
Yes, I think I'm on. You tell me.
Go for it.
All right. Well, good morning, everyone. I do appreciate the opportunity to meet with you virtually today. Hope you and your families are all doing well. A lot has changed since I reported to this board back in late August. I did complete a four month temporary assignment as the Deputy Forest Supervisor of the White Mountain National Forest, New Hampshire. It was very cold there. So it was good to come back. But when I came back within a week, I was dealing with COVID-19 like you all are, like I've been listening to this morning. And then lastly, I'm happy to report that my wife is eight months pregnant and we're expecting a baby girl at the end of next month.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, so this morning I will be updating you on three different subjects. One, of course, we're going to give you our COVID-19 update. You know, kind of give you a status check and what's going on in the district. Secondly, Dwayne Franklin, our new district fire management officer is going to kind of give you an update on the, on our fire management efforts. In the 2020 fire season. And then lastly, I'll give you some updates and highlights on non-COVID related items because we can't just only talk about COVID. We are doing a lot of other things on the district. But we'll start with COVID, since that is a really big topic for all of us. It definitely is for us as well. And so, yeah, like most other businesses and public agencies, COVID-19 has really affected the agency and the district operationally. And it's really taken up the bulk of most of our time with the calls and the organization and getting all the PPE that we need and putting in best management practices, et cetera. The district office and visitor center has been closed since March 14th. And all of our eligible employees are currently teleworking. However, in preparation for the upcoming fire season, though you wouldn't know that right now because it's pouring rain out. Permanent fire personnel, including myself, have been working at the office for the past two weeks. And additionally, starting yesterday, all of our temporary firefighters are back to work. The district is at full capacity for wildland firefighting. And Dwayne will provide more detailed update again on our 2020 fire management efforts. Just some other highlights for non-fire employees. The agency has drafted a phase in back to work plan, which is good, which should allow permanent non-fire employees to return to work, hopefully within the next. The agency has drafted a phase-in back-to-work plan, which is good, which should allow permanent non-fire employees to return to work, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Timber operations throughout the duration of the closure have continued. And we've been providing free firewood and not requiring firewood permits for the residents of Del Norte County. Recreation, all of our developed recreation sites, again, were closed on March 14th. However, the forest is open. It has been open. We've been having a lot of visitors here. Including all our trails and our dispersed campgrounds. And the good news here, again, looking at a lot of loosening up here, beginning on Friday, the 15th of May. The Panther Flat Campground, our most popular campground, will be reopened. And the following Friday on the 22nd of May, all remaining developed recreation sites and day use areas will be open, with the exception of Big Flat Campground. Which should open up the following week on June 1st. The Six Rivers National Forest is standing up an incident management organization. Our employees are following best management practice to ensure minimum exposure to COVID-19. And really, everybody just really wants to get back to work. I have been working as a liaison on that incident management team and I've been in close contact with the county. And we're working very closely with Kimmy. And she's doing a great job. And she also mentioned that there should be some testing maybe becoming available in the county at some point in the near future. And that our first responders, our wildlife firefighters will have access to testing, which would be a great effort and support for us. So in summary, though, we've been hampered by COVID-19. The district has continued to work at fulfilling our critical mission and meeting the needs of the citizens of Del Norte County. I'll provide you on some of those updates here in a bit. So I'm going to hand this over to Dwayne. Dwayne Franklin, again, our new FMO started late last year. Now, we're very lucky to have Dwayne. He has many years of fire experience. I think he started fighting fire back in 1987. And came over from the Mad River Ranger District of the Six Rivers where he was a fire management officer. Prior to that, Dwayne was the fuel specialist here on the NRA for very, for many years. So he's very familiar with this piece of ground. And he lives up in Cave Junction, so is a member of the general regional area. So anyway, glad to have Dwayne here. So Dwayne, you want to take it from here, please, and just give them update on.
Yeah, this is Dwayne Franklin. I guess my video is not working. So I'll just go over the, my some of the talking points I have for you guys. Yeah, 2020 fire staffing this year will have two type-three engines. They have 500 gallons of water and they'll be staffed with six people each. We also have, we also have one water tender with 1,500 gallons tank. We'll have one hot shot crew with 20 people. We will have, we have two fire prevention modules. They have 80 gallons of water and they'll have one person each. And then we'll have one fire detection lookout up on, up on Ship Mountain, which is located northeast of the community of Big Flat. So we have, that's our normal staffing we have every year. Yeah, with the, of course, of course, with this COVID. Effectuality around, it's making, you know, things a little interesting how we're going to do it, but right now everybody's on. Talking some kind of things we're doing to work with the COVID. So the only thing we're doing is we are practicing our social distancing, which is making training really, really interesting this time of year. Like that's normally, they were in, you know, close quarters with the training, but we are working in bigger groups, so that's making things really interesting. We are doing a lot more stuff outside, you know, and again with this rain and makes, that makes things interesting. So one thing they're doing nationally and we're going to be doing locally, if we do get fires here, we are going, we are going to be putting people at seven big camps. We're going to be putting them in smaller locations that will help minimize any spread of social distancing and increase the social distancing for our firefighters. The, so you know, the, this year you'll see the big fire camps, you'll see a lot of little camps all throughout the districts if we get any fires this year. And then with that, we'll be doing a lot more radio briefings, a lot more briefings like we are doing with this, this type of Zoom technology. So it'll be, it'll be interesting how we're going to be doing that, but we have, we've been practicing this technology for the last about the, about the last month and a half, you know, with Zoom and with the different technologies. Also, we've also had two fires in the last two weeks. And this is telling us, you know, what we need to work on, but, but we were able to suppress the fires, we were able to get people to the fires. And do our businesses and just, you know, we're just have to be constantly thinking how we're going to keep, you know, keeping people separate when we, and then as we do briefings. How we're going to sit there and practice social distancing. And again, a lot of that's going to be working with radio briefings and technology like this. Another thing we're doing this year is we are on our lookout, Ship Mountain, and normally it's, it's open to the public. People come up there and visit. We're going to limit the, now people that come up there, it's a really small building and. So as, as people get to the gate, they'll call on the phone and, and, and talk to the, to our lookout, one of the staff on the lookout and they'll. Tell them how many people can come up, you know, because it's a small little building and, you know, can have five people in that building, you know, maybe one or two people. I'm only, you know, so that's a little change this year because people like visiting the lookout. But again, because of the COVID issues, we want to make sure our people are staying safe. But the other thing is this year, you know, again, with this rain, it seems kind of funny, but we are, you know, we probably know we are short of rainfall this year. Our snow packs are well, you know, at 33% of normal. So we are. So we, you know, our forest is real dry, even with this rain, it's, it's mostly just hitting our forest fuels and going right, you know, into the ground. It's not soaking into the wood. So we are, you know, I want to tell people, make sure this year as they're visiting the woods, that we are below normal for, for moisture in our fuels. And which means we can have fires, you know, more fires this year. And we're trending a lot like the 2015 fire season. So that's kind of things, you know, people from there with fires we had in this area in 2015, we're trending a lot of those, those trends right now, how we're trending. You know, so yeah, a little bit of rain like this is not, it's, it's helping, but it's not fixing things. We're still dry. It'll take a lot of rain for many, many weeks to get back to normal where we should be. So, so yeah, as we, as we, people are visiting the woods and we're interacting with people, we remind them that, you know, we are, and we are dry this year and they do need careful with fire. So if you have any questions, you know, please feel free to give me a call about the fire district. You know, I'm here. One thing is with all those resources I told you we have, you know, they're here, they're being trained. But they can also be called to other locations to help with, with higher activity, other places in the, in the country and in the state. So we always will keep a minimum of one fire agent here and one patrol to keep, keep the, for initial attack. So if we send, you know, the hot shot crew is a national resource and they could call any place in the nation to go fight fire. But in return, if we start having fires here, the force is really, really good, you know, getting us the help we need. So we, we do move things around, around the area and also around the country to help other places that are in high fire danger. But when we need help, the force will send us equipment and the resource we need. So at a minimum, we always have one engine and one patrol on. Our staffing is between 9:30 in the morning to 6 o'clock at night. And then after hours, people were on call, but we didn't get people fairly quick if there's fires in the evening. If we know they're signing coming in, then we will staff longer if needed. So this year, we wanted to just let you know, we are prepared for, for the fire season this year. We have everybody on like we normally do. This is going to be a little more effort just to make sure we're practicing the social distancing. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dwayne. All right. Thank you, Dwayne. So I just want to reemphasize a couple of key points that Dwayne touched on. Even with these COVID-19 mitigations and BNP's, this will not hamper our ability to respond to wildland fire this year. We will be completely prepared. And in the 2020 fire season, you know, our strategy, because of the COVID-related issues and because of the dry season. Will be rapid containment and we'll be dealing with a full suppression strategy. We will not be managing fire this year for resource benefit. And as always, I will be providing frequent and timely information as needed as the fire season progresses. So we've gone through two of our subjects. I would like to, if there's time, provide you a quick update. On some of the other things that are going on, some of the good things that are going on in the district. And how I, you know, I've always done this is we have five focus areas, five areas of priority for me, and that's landscape scale restoration. Implementing the travel management plan, focusing on recreation, raising the profile of our district, strengthening and building partnerships. Are you guys ready for some good news?
Sure.
Good news, landscape scale restoration. We are moving very aggressively. We've had a lot of success since the last time we spoke. So in March of this year, the forest signed the North Knopki Decision Memo. That's an EPA document. Which authorizes approximately 250 acres of commercial thinning and 360 acres of hazardous fuels reduction. So that's one project. Soon after that, in May, excuse me, that was in March of this year, May of 2019, eight months before. We signed the South Knopki Decision Memo, which authorized approximately 300 acres of commercial timber production and five acres of hazardous fuels reduction. Combined, these projects will provide 5.5 million board feet of timber, which will be sold through a stewardship contract. With, in a partnership, excuse me, with the Mule Deer Foundation. So in summary, in less than a year, between May 2019 and March 2020, we've authorized 500 acres of commercial thinning and 860 acres of hazardous fuels reduction. And 5.5 million board feet of timber. Yes, the really good news, as folks know, we've, I've reported this in the past. The Little Jones Timber Cell was sold last year. And that was 3 million board feet of timber. And that'll be implemented in this year and in next year. But additionally, this is really the good news, the district was awarded $600,000 in joint chiefs funding. To implement all the hazardous fuels work from that project. So that's 380 acres of hazardous fuels that is now completely funded. And as part of that joint chiefs funding, our sister UST agency up here in Del Norte, NRCS, was awarded funding to complete. 908 acres of connected fuel breaks on private land in the Washington Flat, Willoughby. So you're talking about 1,300 acres of additional fuels reduction between private land and public land in a high-profile Willoughby outside of Gasky. So as you can see, this reflects the value of partnership and strong collaboration. Lastly, as part of our five-year vegetation management plan, right now, we are currently working on the Rowdy Divide Project. Which estimates 500 acres of commercial thinning and 2,000 acres of hazardous fuels reduction. And in just this year, the district was awarded almost $500,000 to support those planning efforts. So in summary, our aggressive efforts and strong partnerships are definitely paying dividends and enhancing our ability to restore forest and community resilience. So that's landscape scale restoration. And I'll go through these others pretty quickly because I know your time is valuable. Implementing the Smith River NRA Travel Management Plan, I have great news to report here as well. In late 2019, the forest was awarded $1.3 million to complete all the unfunded travel management implementation work on the district. That work will begin this summer. It's going into a contract. This funding is on top of the approximate $300,000 NIFWIF grant that the county, Del Norte County, and the district was awarded last year. So in summary, we've received $1.6 million in funding to complete all, I say all, the travel management work on the Smith River NRA. Recreation. Making the NRA worthy of its name and recognizing our role in helping develop a tourism-driven economy in Del Norte County. As folks know, I don't have a trail crew and I count on partners to improve our trail experience. And last year was a great year. We were very successful in accomplishing trail work on the NRA, the best in years. With support from the Siskiast Mountain Club, the Bigfoot Trail Alliance and the Del Norte Trail Alliance, over 20 miles of critical trail maintenance was accomplished. With the majority of that work occurring on the very popular South Kelsey Trail. We're anticipating similar efforts and success with our partners this year. Mountain bike trails, district will, with support from the Del Norte Trail Alliance and the Smith River Collaborative. Will be submitting a rack proposal to fund plan for the hurdy-gurdy mountain bike trail system. Off Big Flat Campground and utilize these existing logging roads, mining trails, along with a new trail. You created a very exciting mountain bike trail system. And it fits very nicely with our existing recreation out there. That includes an existing trail, the Big Flat Campground, and all the dispersed campgrounds along Hurdy-Gurdy Creek. Raising the profile of the NRA, you know, by aggressively presuming all this funding and grants and building partnerships, getting out our story. And getting involved in this community, Smith River NRA has become progressively more competitive for funding, both internally and externally. And since I last presented to this board, and I just summarized that just before. The district has been awarded approximately $2.6 million in funding to complete all the important work we're trying to do here. That's just since August, since I presented to you last. Lastly, but very importantly, strengthening building partnerships, all the work and success we've had recently. Being at receiving grant money for landscape restoration, fuels reduction, travel management. To improving our recreational experience are all because of our strong and growing partnerships. Through our work with the collaborative, with Del Norte County, the tribes and other partners, we're becoming more successful, more competitive and building more consensus. Around the need to improve forest health and support our local communities. With that, let me take this opportunity to express my gratitude for the strong partnership and relationship we have with this county. This is a critical relationship for us and I'll do everything I can to maintain this strong partnership. And just want to thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you and update you this morning. And both Dwayne and I are available for any questions if there are any. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. I know we're running behind, so we probably won't take a lot of time for questions, but I really appreciate your leadership. I think it's, it's really been. Invaluable. What you've put into this process to make our national recreation area truly a national recreation area. That has finally been noticed after all these years. So really appreciate it. I know working on the collaborative. Has been really a great part of that and we appreciate everything you're doing. Are there any other comments or questions from board members?
Yeah, sure. If I, if I could chime in, Jerry, you hit it right on the nose. Jeff, your leadership has been outstanding in taking every longstanding issue, which you did address today. And moving those forward in priority conversations with agencies around us, your sister agencies. I cannot thank you enough and your staff and these collaborative partners that have helped to get us there. This is the biggest chunk of ground in Del Norte County. And it for historically has been so underutilized for the past two decades. With this new momentum that you, you're basically talking about here today. And the actions that you've now demonstrated with you and the partnership and your staff. I, I see nothing but a bright future for the Smith River NRA and I cannot thank you and your staff enough for that. And we really appreciate you touching on fire season. I know we're going to have another conversation about that, hopefully here in the near future with our surrounding neighbors. But yeah, we cannot forget about fire season. It's going to be one of those years where you have to pay a lot of attention and be extremely diligent. And appreciate Dwayne Franklin getting us up to date on that. Thanks, Chairman.
You got it. Anybody else got anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Jeff, can you hear me okay?
I do. Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Jeff. Congratulations on your little baby girl in month and best of wishes. I appreciate and so recognize your development of the commercial aspects of 5.5 million board square feet and, and moving in that direction. It's, it's very encouraging. Would you talk to us about any updates in biomass development? I don't think I heard any of that in your report. And also with regard to trail restoration, is Alder Camp up and running or are they closed down with COVID virus? Are you reaching out to them? Pelican Bay State Prison has crews out and about. They're looking for work. And of course, our probation department is always looking to burn off hours. And I was wondering if you've explored. Or road, trail restoration, any of those avenues? And again, biomass.
So no good question. You know, the biomass thing is a challenge. We met with local partners here. We've met with local partners in Humboldt. We've met broadly. And we're just having a difficult time making the economics work. We have plenty of biomass available to provide to a local market. But the cost of getting that fuel off the forest into a mill or wherever it needs to go. Is just, is very expensive and the economics just don't seem to work out. And so we get interest from private companies. But we've had people come in here and visit. We've demonstrated what we have available for those interests and. Once they kind of do the math, it just tends to fall off. Your second question, Alder Camp? Yes, Alder Camp is currently, well, not right today, of course, but recently have been working through a NIFWIF grant. That the county has. recently have been working through a NIFWIF grant that the county has, and they've been doing a lot of fuels reduction work right here across the street from our office on French Hill, and they're doing a lot of that work through that grant process, and so they've been great, and they've been very much available for us so far.
Thank you. Is there, is there any public comment?
I do not see any public comment. I know hands are raised.
All right, thanks. Anybody got anything else? We'll move on to Dr. Ray Walt then. Thank you, Jeff, so much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. You guys have a great day. Well, thanks.
Dr. Ray Walt, are you still with us? Sorry for the delay. We've had some technical difficulties as well as things going a little longer than we expected. Are you there?
I am, and that's not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
So I think I'll begin by trying to bring the board up to date on the events of last week. Everybody, I'm sure has been following the news conferences from the governor's office. There were some discussions at the state level conducted with health officers and with county health executives about how this plan, this next step to relax the stay-at-home order is gonna take place, and what we needed to do if we wanted to apply for variance, and what a variance means is that we get to get into stage two a little early and ahead of the rest of the state. Some counties have already sent in their documentation. It was kind of a mad scramble to get an appointment to talk about this, because one of the requirements is that we contact the state once we had our documents ready, go over everything kind of in advance of sending it in. And so we worked pretty hard on the weekend to revise the plan we had developed already for reopening, which had been started weeks ago before we had any guidance from the state how this was gonna look. We had our interview yesterday with the state. We reviewed everything. One of the reasons we put off a little bit is because I feel very strongly that our county is at risk of not having any active disease at this time. You know, our case counts have stayed stable. We have almost four hundred and eighty tests that have been done. It's been several weeks since our last case, and, and we think there's a very strong chance that our last case was actually linked to the first couple of cases time-wise, because that's when we think we had disease activity just getting started. I made the case to the county or to the state yesterday during my presentation that we actually needed some relaxation of a stage three item, namely allowing some short-stay travelers to come in and stay in our county to actually bring virus into the county, so we have something to measure. And here's the problem with not having any activity as you open up. If you open up and start relaxing, relaxing restrictions and increasing movement and, you know, getting something back closer to where we were six months ago, if you don't have any disease activity to measure the effect of that, you really don't know how much effect it's gonna have when you do get disease. And my fear, which I tried to impart to the state representative very clearly yesterday, is that we'll be well along in stage three or maybe even beyond before we get our first cases back in the county, because I think they're going to be brought in from outside. So I made the case that we ought to be able, I asked for a special grant from the state to allow us to open up vacation rentals and campgrounds in RV parks to short-stay travelers. And I, I think this is probably the safest way to make sure that we actually have some disease activity once we get the rest of the plan going. I don't know how they're gonna respond to this. They, the, the representative did say they would take it to the next level and, and bring it for discussion. What we need locally yet to get done for this application process is a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors for our plan as it stands. So we've been drafting and redrafting and editing it the last couple of days. We think we have pretty much everything that we need to present to you. I don't know that you need to take a, a vote or a resolution of any kind, but it is a requirement from C D P H that you be aware of the plan and show that your awareness by giving us a supporting letter. So that's what I'm really asking for today, is that you consider this. The, the attestation covers a bunch of areas having to do with public health preparedness, hospital capacity, surge capacity, testing capacity, contact tracing capacity. We've answered all those questions. We've gone into great detail. The, the plan, our version of it, our answers in our reopening plan as we are planning to submit to the state will be, I believe it will be available online. I'm not sure if it's gonna be open to the public or not, but they're, they're planning with us to make it more generally accessible in some way, I believe. And as soon as you're able to do this, we can submit it, and then we see what the response is. I don't know if they're gonna grant our special request. If they don't, I think they'll be disappointed, and I will keep pressing them on it, because the longer we go without new cases, the more convinced I'm going to be that this may indeed be our situation. And one of the other things that we're, we've decided to do to, to help make this case as well as monitor disease activity in the future is to actually test for the presence of the virus in wastewater. Turns out that you can detect RNA from, from coronavirus in sewage treatment plants. And it's a fairly easy test. It, it uses essentially the same technology in a different way, but essentially the same PCR analysis that they're using for clinical testing. And other counties have, have already started this. When I heard about it several weeks ago, I, I said we ought to get on board with this, so we are actually, I think we're having our first testing capacity sent to us this week. And I'm, I will not be surprised at all if we detect nothing. And, and I think that will strengthen our case to the state that we need to be allowed to have the opportunity to import some virus, as crazy as that sounds. If we don't have any disease activity going on as we start to relax these restrictions, we won't know when we've gone too far and until we have a huge surge of cases showing up in the hospital and people in, in bad shape, and, and I don't wanna see that, you know. I, I know there's a wide variety of opinion about what this outbreak represents. I'm sticking to what I know and, and what I've learned about this virus. You know, this is a very serious outbreak, and it's, it can't really be equated to flu or pandemic flu. You know, it's, it's kind of misleading to talk about the death rate right now, because most of the, most of the state and the nation have not been exposed yet. They've not recovered from this virus, and we know that to be true. The preliminary sampling data is kind of all over the map, but even the, even the highest rates in the communities that have been hit the hardest is, is still thirty percent at best, if you can believe the way they did their samples. A lot of those samples were not done very scientifically. But even if it was that high, we have, still have a long way to go with this virus. And I, I, I'm very fearful that when it does get here, if we are too far along in the process of reopening, we could find ourselves in bad shape. So that's part of the package. It will make it, it may make a, create a bit of a delay if they refuse to do it initially. But I don't think it would be more than a day or two before we could correct, make any corrections and submit it to them a second time. I don't think it would require a second letter of approval from you. So that's where it stands today. The, the biggest advantage of doing this is it allows us to open up restaurants in a kind of a stepwise fashion earlier than the rest of the state. And I, I say the rest of the state, meaning, you know, the counties that have the greatest population. This, this variance application is available to about thirty counties in the state, based on their demographics, their disease activity, everything that's been going on. And, and you know, we're, we're like a lot of small counties. We've had little or no activity. It just reached our borders just as we shut everything down, so you know, the virus essentially got halted in its tracks. We're, we're right there with them, and they're all going through the same process this week and, and probably making the same appeals to their boards of supervisors for, for letters of support. We have everything else that we need in terms of documentation. There's a few, a few things that we're gonna ask some of our local partners to, to give us greater detail to strengthen our case, and we need a letter of support from you. And that's the biggest issue with, with COVID nineteen. You know, as everyone knows, we still have only three confirmed cases, almost four hundred and eighty tests done. We are in much better shape than we were a month and a half ago, or even last month when we, when we presented the last time. Testing capacities improved. The hospital now has the ability to do testing in-house, which gets an answer back, you know, literally within an hour or two, which is a huge improvement compared to where we were at the beginning of the outbreak. And I think going forward, our next, our next request, our next project will be trying to improve surveillance testing in the, in the county. We were told that the state plan to, to develop surveillance testing would include, would be, be mapped out in a way that would make it feasible for everyone to be within an hour's drive of a testing site. That may still happen, but it's not happening with the first wave, because the first sites have already been set up. The nearest one is in Humboldt County. We do have access to that, but it's in Eureka, so it's, you know, more on the order of ninety minutes. That's better than nothing, but it's, it's not really where we want to be. So we're gonna work with Humboldt and State C D V H to try and expand that site and make it, make the next step of that site available to us, perhaps by a mobile site that will travel around to the surrounding counties around Humboldt such as Trinity and ourselves, and offer that service. The alternative, if that doesn't happen, is to get into the market and purchase all the, the equipment that we need to do it ourselves and just do it ourselves. And now that the, now that we've seen the rollout of, of this state-run testing capacity, and that there may be some gaps, which would include our county, that is, actually has some appeal to just do it ourselves. But I think we're gonna explore this first option of using the OptumServe testing site in, in Humboldt and see if we can make that work for our needs. And then lastly, the last thing that I think is probably most important in terms of testing for the virus is that we have the availability of antigen testing down the road. This week, there was, this week or last week, I think the first one was approved by the FDA. And that's a quick in-office kind of test, not quite as precise as the PCR test, but very similar in terms of how, how it's done. And I think it will improve things nationwide as soon as that becomes widely available. So we'd like to get our share of it when, when we can and start using that locally. And I think that covers everything I wanted to mention, so I'll, I'm available for your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Ray Walt. I appreciate it. I do have one specific question, and that has to do with the fish cleaning stations down at the harbor. Is that something that is in this next phase, or is that something that should have been closed down or didn't need to be closed down? Could you speak to that, you know?
Uh, well, it's a food-related industry, food service industry, food supplier, so technically it would not need to be, not need to have closed down during the first stage or during the, the pre-staging. Uh, you know, during the governor's order. Food-related industries essentially are, were considered essential services.
Well, this is not an industry. This is just the fish cleaning, the, the recreational fish cleaning.
Oh, the recreational, I see.
Uh, down at the boat ramp, boat launches. I, I heard that with the restrooms being closed and the fish cleaning stations being closed, it makes it very difficult for them to go out, spend all day on the ocean and come back and not have a restroom or not have a place to clean their fish, so.
Yeah, I understand. I, I, I would, I, I think it would depend on correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe that the state decided to close sport fishing on the ocean. And that was a state decision. I'm not, I'm not positive how that played out, because I, I wasn't, I wasn't.
I don't think that's true. They've been fishing all, all along, uh, sports fishing.
Yeah.
I know that they were limited to, you know, having household members only in the boat, I think.
Right, and like charter fishing, I think was closed.
Yeah, if they didn't have enough spacing or whatever, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, these are just, you know, local sports fishing people.
Yeah, I, in answer to your question, I don't think it would, it would be mandatory to close those services. You know, if people are still using the, the harbor access to go out on the ocean, you know, it's, it's outdoor, you know, and the fish cleaning station is by design kind of spaced out a little bit. It'd be easy to configure it so that it would be, it would meet the terms of social distancing and keeping people safe. And then having it outdoors helps a lot, too. So, you know, I think it'd be fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry to take up so much time on that one, but I had a couple of different emails and, and people actually coming in to ask me about that, and I, I thought I would pass that on to you.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from board members?
Yes. Doctor, it's been estimated that about four out of every five restaurants naturally will not survive this virus. A lot of them are hanging on by a thread, including our local restaurants. So what has to happen for our local restaurants to open up?
Well, that's the big advantage of doing this variance application, is that we get to open restaurants ahead of, sort of ahead of the game. You know, that's part of the offer of stage two is that restaurants will, restaurant dining will be opened up. So what we did is we wrote it in, and, and we wrote it this way to make sure the state would agree to it. We wrote it in a staged fashion that we would initially open up to outdoor dining combined with a twenty-five percent capacity indoor dining. So that spaces people out naturally while they work to configure what they're gonna do, because one of the state guidances stated that people could design indoor dining with a six-feet distance or physical barriers that separate tables or booths. And a lot of restaurants are not designed that way, and, and getting that up and running has, takes a little time and a little bit of planning. So we decided to expand the option for outdoor dining, assuming there's no licensure issues with them to do that, as well as starting with a twenty-five percent capacity indoors. That gives them a little bit more opportunity to create service for their customers. And then the next step would be to indoor dining with the state guidance in place. And so both those things can happen if we get this variance approved. And that's a big step for us, because, yeah, you're absolutely right. A lot of our restaurants are, are struggling, trying to make it, make it a living just on takeaway. And it, it, you know, we need to try and help them get going, as, as long as they're doing it in a way that's safe and keeps their customers safe, uh, you know, I think it's, it's past due. It's time to make this happen. So that's why we're, one of the reasons we're applying for this.
Dr. Ray Walt, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, first of all, I'm very encouraged by the report you're delivering to our board this morning. I wasn't quite expecting all this good news you were giving us. While you were on air, you just released the figures, which is four hundred and seventy-six tests have been administered in Del Norte County. There are six awaiting results, four hundred and sixty-seven negatives, and of course, the three cases that you referred to that are weeks old. So my question has to do with the testing and the jumping through the hoops to get all the testing done. Why wouldn't we pursue expanding Sutter's location where all the tests have been done? And expanding that rather than sending people down ninety minutes to Humboldt County for testing. And the second part of that question has to do with what we have to do requirement-wise to move into phase two. What do we have to do to satisfy tracing and tracking and the unknown factor of how often you test and when you test and who gets tested so that we can keep our county and, and its employees safe and keep our, our, all of our folks as safe and secure as possible. So can you address those two issues, please?
Sure. Let me answer the second question first. The requirement from the state for contact tracing for a small county is to have at least one staff member trained and ready to go. They also use a calculation of fifteen staff who are able to do contact tracing per hundred thousand population. So we currently have two of our nurses who've been involved in our contact tracing so far. We have an internal policy and sort of a training document that go hand in hand for how to do this. Contact tracing takes a little bit of time to, to get up to speed on, on the concept, but it's not really technically very hard to do, as long as you're, you know, you're used to, to dealing with questions and getting answers from people, and it's more of a, kind of a social service kind of activity. So by definition, we already have the staff in place who need to meet their minimum requirement. And, you know, we're, we're planning on, on training the other, the other two health, health nurses that we have, as well as some other health department staff and some other county positions, and then if necessary, we'll use medical volunteers. We can use our own documents to do just-in-time training. The state of California, however, is, is really interested in making this a statewide project. And they've developed with, I think in conjunction with UCLA and UCSF, a pretty intensive training module, about twenty hours training total, if you do all the components of it. So that everybody statewide is kind of, kind of starting from the same place in terms of their contact tracing training ability. So when that becomes widely available, we're gonna take advantage of that, I think, to train everybody. So when that becomes widely available, we're going to take advantage of that, I think, to train everybody, even those who've already had experience. So I think we're pretty in pretty good shape to to meet that requirement and to meet the need when the time comes. And, you know, contact tracing is one of those things that's been shown to work really well if you do it consistently. The the key thing, though, is it depends on having test results that you can act on quickly. So for a lot of this outbreak in the United States, we have not had good turnaround time on our test capacity. And our t- test capacity started out very small, and it's been growing, you know, it's been growing steadily, but it it took its time to get to where we are today. So the best thing would be to have point-of-care testing that we could get an answer back literally within fifteen minutes, you know, or an hour or less. Um, and that leads into the second question about Sutter. Sutter's capacity is uh dedicated to clinical questions uh mostly. Um, there are times when we can, we can ask them to do testing and and they've been very cooperative about that. But, you know, at the very beginning of they're getting this capacity, the number of test kits that they were receiving was limited. It was it was a constrained resource. And I expect we have to be kind of careful about how we treat the 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 testing ability at Sutter because as the state loosens up, we know cases are likely to increase around the state. And the testing capacity we have now is not going to remain in such a situation going forward. In other words, we have, we're kind of flush at the moment in terms of testing. But as he, as everything heats up statewide, that's going to change, and there will be some constraints again on testing capacity. So I don't want to rely on one single source. I'd rather pursue all the other options and and see what we can compile together and keep going as this goes forward because the testing ability is going to go up and down over the next few months, depending on what's going on around the rest of the state and around the country. It's still in relative short supply. It's gotten a lot better. I'm I'm the first to admit that because I think we're far, far better off than we were a month or a month and a half ago. We have to be careful not to overutilize any single source for for testing, especially a hospital source that's really based there. It's really cited there for clinical purposes, not for surveillance purposes. But if we have symptomatic people and they need to be tested and and we have and and we have the capacity, yes, we can.
Just to follow a question with regard to the expansion of Sutter, is it possible, considerable to to, can you consider going interstate into Brookings Harbor if there's a test site available there? I know it's another state, but it would provide another test uh uh opportunity. Is that something you could consider?
We could. It's it's a little bit unorthodox, but it's come up already because we have had some information exchanges with Curry in terms of testing. And uh, you know, it does raise a point. A lot of our, a lot of the clientele that come to Sutter Coast actually come from Brookings in the surrounding area, you know, at least uh twenty, twenty-five percent of their 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 catchment area, their business area for a local hospital comes from across the border. So, yeah, we've, we've been in contact with Curry Public Health. Uh, we have not talked about a joint testing project. That's, like I said, that's a little bit outside the the box for everybody because it's interstate, and that does create some problems that nobody has any experience with solving, so. But, you know, we we are aware that they are testing up there, and they are testing some people from Del Norte and vice versa, so we have, our our biggest uh issue has been just making sure we have good information exchange so we can stay current on what they're doing up there, and they can stay current on what we're doing.
Anybody got other comments or questions for Dr. Ray Walt? Chris, go ahead.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh, Dr. Ray Walt, excellent uh report. Um, I've participated in many of the statewide calls hosted by CSAC with Dr. Galley and uh Governor Newsom's Chief of Staff, just to keep apprised of what's going on. Um, a lot of board members throughout the various counties have expressed concern with the um let's, let's call it the maybe the reluctance to test. Um, if we saw a surge um in our county, if our populations, uh, let's say thirty thousand folks, which it's not. Um, under Newsom's rules, that that is essentially one per ten thousand people. There's some counties that are expressing concern because we could have this uh spike potentially that you've discussed earlier in your conversation that would rapidly allow for tests then to be conducted. We would have most likely over three confirmed cases. What then does that do to our county? Do we go back into the shutdown mode and we're on this constant roller coaster? So I'm hoping um you could discuss a little some of the current concerns that weren't able to be answered by Dr. Galley last week, that many supervisors throughout the state are currently asking him, which is if we get on this roller coaster of up and down detections, where the governor says we could only have one per ten thousand people, how's that play into our startup or shutdown type scenarios? And and how do you see that happening for Delmar?
Yeah, it's um it's one of the things that we were asked during our interview yesterday, and and basically what they want to know is what are the metrics for for modifying anything that we've relaxed? In other words, going backwards. And there's different ways of doing that. You can, you can measure all sorts of information, but I stuck with the simplest and what I thought was the most pertinent, which is what the activity at the hospital was. So I'm submitting uh a statement basically asking or telling them as long as we stay within an average ceiling of admissions for COVID to our hospital, that it doesn't overburden the capacity of the hospital. It may, you know, it may fill up the hospital or or two-thirds full or, you know, however, it's hard to know exactly how it's going to play out right now. But as long as it's not overburdening the hospital, um, we are going to live whatever with whatever level of disease activity that represents. Because that that really is the heart of all of this. It's not necessarily to prevent transmission of COVID nineteen forever in a community. Because if we were on, if we want to do that, we'd have to live the way we are right now for the rest of the pandemic, and and nobody, including myself, wants to do that. Absolutely not. What we do want to do is we want to have a manageable activity level of the disease so that we don't get overwhelmed. And so as people need to have services at the hospital, the hospital is there. They can take care of them. They can get them better. They can send them home. And part of that strategy uh for some people means that they indeed are going to have to live this way, or they should live this way. They should choose to live this way. The super high-risk people, the super elderly, especially with the severe medical problems, they cannot come outside and play yet. They have to stay indoors. They have to stay shuttered down, especially during the early phases of this reopening. Because if if they are precisely the people that we want to keep this disease away from. Most of the rest of the population can get this. They they can, some people are going to get very sick. But most people are going to get this and get over it, and and slowly over time, it'll percolate its way through our community. And everyone will have had a chance to get it and get build up some immunity. You know, we hope that immunity is protected. We still don't know that for sure. But we believe based on the behavior of other coronaviruses that it does afford protection. So that if you get sick, then if you get exposed to it next time, you may get sick, but it's not going to be very severely. You won't get severely ill. It'll help you fight it off quickly. And it really, that's where we need to be. We just need to do it in a stepwise fashion that we don't overwhelm things so much that that people get in trouble because there's no place to send them. That's the scenario we're trying to prevent. So we're, we put in metrics based on hospital activity, and as long as we're under that ceiling and that threshold and the hospital is able to manage our cases, we won't change anything. We'll s- we'll stay where we are, or we'll look ahead to the next step and and invoke it slowly and and watch what happens. And that's, that's going to be the hard part about this is that whenever you make a change, you have to watch to see the effect, you know, over a period of several weeks, because it doesn't happen overnight. You know, the virus needs time to find a new, a new source, a new target. And then it needs incubation, and then that person has to get sick and then pass it on to two, two other people or three other people. And it slowly builds up in your community, and then you see if there's a change that that's going to cause a problem. And it unfortunately, it just takes time. So this has to go in a stepwise fashion to do it safely. We're, we could end up in big trouble.
Thank you, doctor. That was a an excellent synopsis. Really appreciate your time explaining that to the the board and the community.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Talon, have you got anything? You good?
I'm good. Thanks for asking. I just want to say thank you, Dr. Ray Walt. Um, your approach is exactly what we need to do. Uh, I had these conversations this weekend with the Senator as well, and I think the approach that we're taking as a community as a whole, including our businesses, in the conversation has been very important. And uh, I think you've done an excellent job, and I thank you for all your time and effort into this.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Dr. Uh, Ray Walt, I I want to echo those same sentiments. Uh, I think, uh, I think you've been outstanding. Very approachable, appreciate everything. There is one thing that I wanted to touch. You, you talked about touching into some of the proposal touches into phase three, is that correct?
That's correct.
And and so is that why we need the variants? Uh, my understanding is that if we have a plan that only uh goes into that, uh, whatever it is, phase two plus, uh, and we meet that criteria that we just are kind of automatically approved as long as the board goes along with it?
Yeah. Yeah, technically, that's correct, but what I wanted to do is with this opportunity of applying for variants, I asked for the special special variants for our county for those reasons. Now, I, like I said, I have no idea what they'll say. They may say, no, you can't do it. And then we'll have to take that section out of our attestation and we'll resubmit it without that particular portion of it. But I I can't think of any better opportunity to make the case that we we need to be able to assure that we actually have active disease here in the county. And the best way I can think of to do it is to open it up for importation. I mean, basically, we have to open up a portion of our tourist industry and see if we can bring some cases into the county to make sure we're actually starting not from zero, but from one or two. Uh, we just need to have something going on that we can show, yeah, we've got it here, and now we can measure it. So they may say no. If they say no, I'm going to keep pressing on on them, but I will, I will come back. We'll come back to you and say we need to attest just to go to the the standard stage-two variants, and that'll allow us to open up our restaurants. Um, I think it would, it would add an extra couple of days. I think it's worth doing just to to give us a shot at trying to get, you know, a little bit of uh a a proof that we have some disease here, and and I think that's the method that's that makes the most sense. But if they say no, we'll, we'll have to go back and and resubmit it without that portion. And uh, we'll keep pressing them on it, and I'll I'll keep making the case that, you know, because like I said, down the road, if we have nothing going on and we're into well into phase, stage three, and suddenly we have a burst of cases, we could be in big trouble. I don't want to see that happen here.
Great, thank you. Uh, is there any public comment, Kylie or Dan?
Uh, there, Wonder Stump has their hand raised.
Okay. Bob, is that you? Robert?
I'm sorry, guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. You know, I I am alarmed to hear, you know, that, you know, we want to import the cases, you know, I I shut down a little early and with and came at you and guys in early March, you know, kind of thinking we could keep everything going except for the the visitor portion and the and that the tourist economy was over. I'd already, you know, came to that conclusion in early March, you know? Um, you know, and it it the backwards, and I hear backwards, and it's like, yeah, that's what I think kind of we're doing is for some reason just wanting to go backwards without actually finishing this house. You know, people like myself, we've, we made a sacrifice uh for the community's good, you know, this is not for my good. We're miserable like everybody else here, you know? I've got chickens in my living room, for God's sakes. Um, we're miserable like everybody else, you know, but we wanted to make a sacrifice for the overall good of the community, you know, go through this chemotherapy altogether. Uh, the United States, you know, they lent twenty-five billion dollars to Boeing last week. That's one-third of that company's entire value. You know, no one would fly on Boeing if they had an option. But the taxpayers are 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 not even buying Boeing. They're just giving them no-interest loans, you know, and we're going to be investing probably about our entire GDP is going to be reprinted this year by the Federal Reserve. So what we have to do as a county is be writing the the federal government to make sure that the people get a percent, you know, a good portion of that, and it doesn't go to publicly traded corporations. You know, so I I get these figures is that, uh, you know, thirteen hundred people out of one million have died in New in New York. So we can say that then one hundred and thirty-eight out of a hundred thousand, and we can say thirteen out of ten thousand. And that's where it gets alarming because we have twenty-five thousand people here. We don't need to bring it here where we have no resources to deal with it and pretend that this is a laboratory. I've heard we didn't have resources to test to do the laboratory thing, and I I'd I'd offered to to help with that like a month ago. So now's not the time to say we're a laboratory. New York's the laboratory. And our total death is about thirty-two on New York terms. Thirty-two Del Norders would have died if we were suffering the way New York has suffered uh so far, you know, if we shared the suffering evenly. And I understand we haven't shared the suffering evenly because we are a remote community, and that's got some advantages, but it's got a terrific disadvantage, and that's the the lack of resources. Um, you know, so again, you know, thirteen hundred, almost fourteen hundred people, and still two-thirds of the cases or more in New York are active out of one million, so a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, or or excuse me, a hundred and thirty-eight out of a hundred thousand, almost fourteen people out of ten thousand, you know, so out of a twenty thousand population, you're talking twenty-eight people dead. So when we want to import these these cases, we have to be willing to face these families, you know? Uh, y- y- you know, that to say that they were the cost, you know, for this this economy that makes a lot of really crappy wages, you know, a lot of really bad jobs. These people would be better if you guys would write uh to advocate. I think there's a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus for essential workers that Mitt Romney got behind and the Democrats have got behind. That would be great, and that would help our economy. All of a sudden, we'd have a private sector that could afford to buy a home here, you know, not just the prison guards, you know? And so we we'd actually see some wonderful stuff happening, you know, if we saw Walmart workers and Safeway workers doubling their their salary here. And of course, it's going to cost us a little bit more, but we do want food. You know, I get it. Thank you very much.
You're up. Any other public comment? Can anybody see if there are any hands raised?
Chair, there is one more. Can you hear me?
Yep.
And her name is Debbie, and her hand's raised. Debbie, can you hear us?
Got it.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Chairman Hemmanson and members of the board. This is Debbie Thompson. Um, Dr. Ray Walt, I just want to commend you on your your presentation that you did. Um, um, Chairman Hemmanson, I would urge you to support Dr. Ray Walt's letter. Um, we are all essential workers in Delmar County, and we all deserve to have our businesses open. And so I I hope that you will support this letter and um just know that all the businesses, including lodging and restaurants, are going to be following face practices.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other public comment uh on Dr. Ray Walt's presentation?
I don't see any.
I am not seeing any either.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ray Walt. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Can I ask one final question? Um, Dr. Ray Walt, when when I've discussed with other communities, um, some, some of the side effects of this shutdowns more more closely specific to clinical depression, um, other things that we we worry about when people become isolated. Have you seen or have spoken with anybody in public health? Has have Del Norders started showing signs of clinical depression? Um, from this, what what are we seeing here?
Uh, I think there is a s- some, from what I've heard, I haven't studied this a lot closely because there's been so much other stuff to deal with, but I've heard that there is some, yeah, some indicators that are starting to show that. And I think it kind of stands to reason, you know, there, the access is not quite as good for people who need, uh, you know, therapy or or counseling. Um, certainly, the situation is not very healthy being sheltered in place for for extended length of time. I think one of the concerned, one of the biggest concerns we've had at at Health and Social Services is just the fact that um, you know, some reporting of of incidents like child abuse has gone down quite dramatically, and that's always a concern. So you know, we know there's, there's a potentially huge social toll that being in this kind of isolation status for this long takes, and and I, and and that is factored in at every level and in deciding how to how to remedy that because you know, we put the mitigation strategies in place to stop a calamity, but we're not living with a calamity. We have to, we have to make sure we aren't creating a small calamity, you know, under the surface by doing that, and, you know, it's actually ab- absolutely right. We have to we have to relax things and start uh having those uh those opportunities for people to get the help that they need in in a way that's going to help them.
Yeah, thank you, doctor.
Okay.
Carol? Could I pipe in one little bit here? Um, the letter of support from the Board of Supervisors will be on a special agenda. It looks like it's going to be Thursday morning at ten o'clock. Uh, we'll, we'll finish that all up and for you know, the sake of the public's information, um, it's taken a tremendous amount of time over the last five days to get this put in position so that it was uh able to come forward to the board, and after the interview with the state last night, Dr. Ray Walt has also made some edits. There were some other edits this morning, so it'll be in a form to be able to be approved by the board very soon. Just wanted to make sure everybody understood that the next action the board takes will be at a special meeting.
Thanks, Jay. I appreciate that.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on now to the consent agenda. And I will ask for public comment on consent agenda items only.
Move to the president.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Supervisor Howard making motion Supervisor Cowan seconding. No public comment.
Seeing any at this time, Chair.
Okay, Kylie, would you pull work, please?
Supervisor Gatlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Burkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chairman Hemmingson?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to our general government regular items.
Chairman, do you want to do the proclamation?
Proclamations and a resolution.
I do. Chris, you have a resolution for Grant Henderson. Would you please read that?
I do. Thank you. Chairman, I'm gonna turn towards my other screen, so I'll try to talk loudly as I'm facing away from my microphone. It gives me great honor to to present this, Chairman, so thank you for allowing me to do this. This is resolution number 2020 dash 027, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Delmar County, State of California honoring Grant Henderson, retiring sheriff's operation commander. Whereas Grant Henderson was first sworn in as a Delmar County Sheriff's Office Reserve Deputy in 1993, successfully completed the 71st call to the Redwood Police Academy in August of 1994, and was sworn in as a full-time Delmore Sheriff's Office Deputy Sheriff on February 28, 1995. And whereas Grant Henderson was first assigned to corrections and then by August of that same year, he was placed on patrol where he would successfully complete field training program. And whereas Grant Henderson served as deputy on patrol for many years, along with being selected to join the Narcotics Task Force in 1997, designated as a field training officer in 1999, operating as a sex crimes detective in 2002, taking possession position as boating safety officer in 2007 while joining the Delmar Sheriff's Office dive team. And whereas Grant Henderson was promoted to sergeant in July of 2009, remaining in that position until Sheriff Aperson promoted him to operations commander, January of 2016. Whereas Grant Henderson been awarded his basic, intermediate and VAD certificates through the California Peace Officers Commission on peace officer standards and training. And whereas Grant Henderson is a highly decorated law enforcement officer with recognition that included serving as a firefighter, swift water rescue swimmer, field training supervisor, member of command staff, incident commander, corner instructor, multiple unit citations, merits for excellent arrests, criminal investigation awards, deputy of the year, merit for good conduct, safe driving award, recruitment award, a sheriff's award medal and a life-saving medal. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors hereby acknowledges the diligence and dedication of Grant Henderson during his 25 years of service to the communities of Delmar County. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors expresses appreciation and best wishes to Grant as he enjoys a much deserved retirement and finally completing the sweet fastback Ford Mustang already on Grant, passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of Delmar County, State of California this 12th day of May 2020, signed by Chairman Jerry Hemmingson. I'm gonna clap. Everybody else is clapping, Grant. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Hemmingson. Your mic is muted, Chairman.
Sheriff Aperson, did you have anything to add or was saying, I see you're on the call. You good?
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
All right, yes, that's that's Grant sitting behind me there. He came out of retirement to watch this on the computer, so I appreciate you acknowledging him. Yeah. You know, Grant, as mentioned before, has dedicated over 25 years to the Delmar County Sheriff's Office and I feel fortunate that I had the opportunity to work with him in several different capacities for the better part of 20 years. We went to sergeant school together, which we still have stories we won't talk about. But Grant has always been one of those deputies that other law enforcement officers have found and sought out for counsel. Even prior to his formal leadership positions, he's always been somewhat of a leader in our department, follows his common sense, had great intuition. And I know when he got onto command staff, he he certainly guided me from making a wrong turn once in a while and got me on a better track. He's always contributed to the best interests of the Delmar County Sheriff's Office. And he's going to be missed by not only the people he served, but the people he served with. So we appreciate the resolution. We put together a shadow box forum back here that sort of showcases some of his achievements. And again, I just want to say thank you and Grant has already already asked not to speak, so he's back there in the hoodie.
All right, well, congratulations, Grant. Appreciate your service. Thank you for all your hard work.
Congratulations, Grant.
Okay, and so with that, Supervisor Cowan, you have a proclamation.
I do. Thank you, Chairman. I have the proclamation for the foster parent appreciation during National Foster Care Month. We have some fabulous foster care families in our county, so I first want to start off by thanking all of them. Foster care is something that's definitely dear to my heart as well. So this, whereas the family serves as a primary source of love, identity, self-esteem and support and is the very foundation of our communities and of our county. And whereas in Delmar County, there are 115 children and youth in foster care who deserve the very best opportunities that can be provided as well as a safe, secure and stable home processing the compassion and nature nurture of the resource family. And whereas all children and youth in foster care need a positive, meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their life. And whereas dedicated resources families help fulfill a vital role by providing guidance, stability and love, which helps children and families heal and reconnect, resulting in the launch of young people into successful adulthood. And whereas dedicated resource families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a continuous greater need for more foster families. And whereas there are countless individuals, public and private organization and often unsung heroes who work to increase public awareness of the needs of children in leaving foster care. And whereas, as well as enduring and enduring and valuable contribution of foster parents can kinship, adoptive homes, the care foster system is only as good as those who choose to be a part of it. Now therefore be it resolved that the Delmar County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim resource parent appreciation during Foster Care Month in Delmar County and urge all citizens to join us in helping to change a life of a child or a youth in foster care by volunteering their talents and energies on behalf of the children in foster care, foster parents and the child welfare and all other committed professional staff working with them this month and throughout the year. Passed and adopted by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmore, State of California, this 12th day of May 2020. And it'll be signed by Chairman Jerry Hemmingson. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on that is accepting this or wants to speak to this?
Hi, this is Heather. I'd just say thank you for reading the proclamation. We appreciate your support year after year in this matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Heather. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
I have one last, one last proclamation. This is a proclamation of Mental Health Awareness Month, May of 2020. Whereas optimal metal, mental health care is essential to the overall health of Delmar County, resulting in productive activities, fulfilling relationships and the ability to adapt to change and cope with adversity, especially during these unprecedented times of COVID-19. And whereas an estimated 19.2% of US adults experienced mental health in 2018, according to the National Alliance of Mental Illness. And our local behavioral health board and partnering agencies emphasize the importance of promoting mental health and the early identification of mental illness. Last year, Delmar County Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Branch served over 1,200 unique clients. And whereas mental health problems do not discriminate, they affect people regardless of race, creed, age, lifestyle or economic status. And mental health recovery is possible with proper treatment and support, empowering mental health consumers to lead full and productive lives. And whereas as many as eight million Americans who have serious mental illness do not receive adequate treatment each year. And people who have untreated mental health issues use more general health services than those who receive mental health services when they need them. And whereas over 40,000 people in the United States die from suicide annually, suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 34 in the US. And the County of Delmore has made a commitment to mental health care in which all residents can receive high quality and consumer-centered services and take pride in its history of upholding the dignity and civil rights of all of its people, including those coping with mental illness. And whereas mental illness should not be shrouded in stigma and discrimination, causing those who are affected to not seek care. The County of Delmore observes Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health, to increase access to mental health services by shining light on it and offering hope to those in need. And whereas we commend the Department of Health and Human Services Behavioral Health Branch and all the community partner organizations, whether private, faith-based or governmental and individuals for their outstanding work improving the quality of life for mentally disabled individuals in our community. And whereas Behavioral Health Branch recognizes additional challenges are met when dealing with mental illness during a pandemic such as COVID-19. As essential, as essential workers, we are responding to the community needs, providing services to those affected. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmore that May 2020 is hereby proclaimed as Mental Health Awareness Month throughout Delmar County and calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our community to the increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Passed and adopted this 12th day of May 2020. Heather, did you want to speak to this one too, or have we got somebody else?
Yeah, I'm still here. That was a long one. Thank you for hanging in there and being so articulate with it. Supervisor Howard asked about seeing seeing us us increase in services or in reaching out to us. And unfortunately, we are seeing approximately a 22% spike in crisis behavioral health services. We have seen an increase in psychiatric hospitalizations and 5150s. And we've also seen a significant increase in relapse for individuals who struggle with substance use disorders. Ultimately, it seems that we are are going to see an increased need for more serious behavioral health services now and as time goes on. I want everyone to know that we continue to take referrals at behavioral health and services continue to be available through the 24-hour hotline. You can call us at 707-464-7224. And then the 800 number, it's 1-888-446-4408. We've got some new flyers that we're putting out. I encourage people to visit the public health website and Facebook page for resources. We got some public services announcements out on the radio this month, so thank you everyone for your attention.
Thank you, Heather. It is past 12 o'clock. Is there anybody that needs to take a break or? Okay, we we're going to take about a two or three minute break and we will come right back. I don't know how you do the break part, Dan, but we're going to be on break for this little bit. Okay, I'm ready to start back up if we're all back. Jay, are you back? Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to regular items, general government, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter addressed to the State Coastal Conservancy supporting the Sunset Circle Mutually Used Trail. addressed to the State Coastal Conservancy supporting the Sunset Circle Mutley Use Trail in Crescent City. As requested by the Assistant Engineer. Lusanna, you got anything to speak to this if you're on?
I don't have anything to add. It's pretty much all in the letter.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion by Howard, second by Callen. Uh, any public comment?
I see no public comment.
Thank you, Callen. Seeing no or hearing no public comment, uh. Kylie, would you poll the vote please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, budget transfers, approve and accept the COVID-19 crisis response reimbursement fund. Reimbursement funding from the California Department of Public Health. In the amount of $322,543. And to approve and adopt the budget transfer 05 dash 01 in the amount of $322,543. Within the emergency response funding budget as requested by CIO Serena. Move to approve. I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, uh, Howard, the motion second by Berkowitz. Any public comment?
I am not seeing any.
Okay, seeing or hearing none, uh. Kylie, would you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, moving on to legislative and budget issues. Uh, item number 16, review, discuss, and take possible action on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 for the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority. By the Director of Solid Waste Management Authority. Ted, are you on? Ted is on. Do you have anything to speak to this? Uh, has anybody have any comments?
Hello, yes.
Oh, there you go.
I am here. Uh, so, this is our regular budget approval process, uh, first seen by the Board of the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority. And, uh, supervisors Howard and Cowan are, serve on that board. And we then review this draft budget with the city council and the Board of Supervisors. Um, if you have any questions or comments, then, uh, we can forward those to the authority board before they approve the final budget.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we take any action on this, do we, Ted?
Unless there's any significant concern.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think there, does anyone raise a significant concern? Any discussion on it? Any public comment?
I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no public comment, hearing no public comment, uh. Discussion has taken place. Ted, you can move forward.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 17, approve and authorize the chair to sign and send a letter of support for the Frontier Communications Request for Funding. From the California Advance Services Fund of the California Public Utilities Commission to provide broadband to Smith River and Klanna. As required by CIO Serena.
This was requested and, uh, would help support some of the areas that are at the, at the time least supported in regards to broadband and internet and voice-over-internet providers. And, uh, so as it said, it's a letter of support for them to obtain funding.
I move to approve.
I have a motion by Supervisor Callen.
Bob, this really involves your district and mine, so I'd love it if you'd take second.
Yeah, I'll take the second.
And a second by Supervisor Berkowitz. Any public comment? We already went through that. Uh, Kylie, would you poll the vote?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Berkowitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Cowan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, did we get through everything, Kylie?
Uh, Chair, could I give one quick update in regards to the budget process?
You may.
Uh, so as discussed earlier, we are going through our requested budget process and that is when each of the departments have the opportunity to submit their request for budgets and budget appropriations. Uh, we are running just a tad bit behind because of a lot of the unknowns. Um, and we are going to be meeting with some of the departments shortly, but I'm going off of the uh, priorities from the previous year at this point. Uh, a lot of the, what we don't know will come much clearer when the auditor controller can close out the year budget. And we can see what the fund balance will be. As well as see what year-end revenues are, that are received are. So as we go through this process, um, I'll give updates to the board, but, um, what I, what we're trying to do right now is go off the best information available. And I mentioned earlier that the state revise will come out tomorrow. We'll take a look at that, see whether or not that has any effect on our budget immediately. And what they may be, um, saying in that budget as to where, uh, shortfalls may occur. And that could be general fund or non-general fund at this point. Uh, so just wanted to give the board a quick update that we are working through the typical process. And we will be returning in late June with, uh, the recommended, which is the interim spending plan, which won't be finalized until September. I do hope to see whether or not there are any, um, and if there's any legislation passed at the federal level that might assist us with some of the revenue losses and we'll know that, I think, relatively soon. And I'll report back if that happens. I believe that the legislation for, uh, some of the revenue replacement was submitted today. They will be going through their process of meeting, uh, between the Senate and, uh, Congress and, and we'll see what happens. There's a number of things in there that could affect how this rolls out, but as far as unforeseen revenue, that's probably the only revenue that, that is out there right now unless the state allocates revenue also. And we haven't seen any of that at this point. So just a quick update on where we're at and what we're progressing with, with the departments.
Thank you. And if there's nothing else, uh, we will see all your smiling faces on Thursday at 10 o'clock with a special meeting.
And thank you, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.